Good evening and welcome to the March 18th, 2024 City of Pasco Regular Meeting, City Council Regular Meeting. The City Council thanks you for being a part of your city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the Cities of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda for those who are present as you walk in on that small table to your right. The meeting is also being televised on PSC TV, Channel 191. And I know this is kind of pro forma, but Mr. Cruz, can you stand up? Jaime Cruz, please. Yeah, oh, there he is. For those interested, maybe pop in real quick and kind of translate this just. We do have a translator for night, uh, tonight on behalf of the city, Mr. Jaime Cruz.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Jaime Cruz. Para los que ocupen servicios de intérprete pueden obtener el aparato para escuchar.
And I guess, um, you know, I think we have eight sets of headphones. If that's adequate, let's try and get a pulse there. Otherwise, you and I are going to be back and forth the rest of the night.
Okay. Tenemos ocho aparatos, esperemos que sean suficientes para no tardar tanto entre él y yo toda la noche.
Okay, thank you, Jaime. With that slight detour, the meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco, and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council, this and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Public may submit their comments and/or ask questions by asking the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. Lastly, we would like to announce, uh, I already got there. So with that, uh, Ms. Debbie, if you could please call, or not here, okay. Crystal, if you could, uh, give us a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Blaisdale.
Present.
Breen.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Parelles.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
And Serrano.
I am here.
Seven council members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If you all could stand with me and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four is our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion, um, as listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is decided by a council member or by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. John, are we good? Okay. Item A, approval of the meeting minutes for March 4th and March 18th. Item B, bills and communications approving claims in total amount of $9,531,077.34 and write-off totaling $81,763 in delinquent bad debt. Resolution Number 4432, RH2 Engineering, Inc., for Professional Services Agreement for Water System Plan. Resolution Number 4433, Change Order Number Two, Approval for Processed Water Reuse Facility, Phase Two Improvements. Item E, Resolution Number 4434, Project Disseptance for East UGA Expansion Sewer Local Improvement District, Number 152, Phase Two Project. Resolution Num-, uh, Item F, Resolution Number 4435, Memorandum of Agreement, Adding Police Lieutenant Classification to Pasco Police Commanding Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. With that, uh, thank you both.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. And with that, Ms. Crystal, can we get, uh, names?
Councilmember Breen.
Yes.
Harpster.
Yes.
Parelles.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Blaisdale.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
And Serrano.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, Item Five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements, None Listed. Jaime, if I need to slow down, please tell me, okay? Um, okay, so item number six, Public Comment. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Staff's to my right. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit them, uh, submit written, written information for consideration by the council outside of a formal meeting. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county of residency into the microphone before providing your comments. With that, the floor is now open for public comment. Okay, go ahead.
Hello. Hi, um, my name is Caitlin Ashford. I'm here again to talk on the subject of Israel-Palestine. Um, the genocide being conducted in Palestine is not just a foreign issue, but also a local one. Violence against Muslims and Jews have increased dramatically since October due to the bigotry stoked by the ongoing genocide. The City of Pasco has itself rightfully expressed commitment against hate and ethnic violence. The following is from Resolution 4064 issued in 2021. Section 1, the City of Pasco announces hate, acts of violence, bigotry, harassment, or discrimination based on race, religion, gender, et cetera. Section 2, the City of Pasco reaffirms its commitment as an inclusive community and further commits to and urges all community members to work toward overcoming and to discourage all expressions of hate and bigotry and to support one another in this effort. The genocide being conducted in Palestine is a conflict your constituents are invested in out of the commitment to end racist and colonial violence, a commitment Pasco itself here claims to share. You have a large Muslim community living here in the Tri-Cities threatened with racist violence. This meeting time is actually inaccessible to many of them today due to the observation of Ramadan, but they and many others have been out in the streets protesting. They have been talking with representatives of Representative Dan Newhouse and trying to take action in response to this conflict. In the resolution I read from earlier, another line reads, "Combating racism requires dialogue, unity of purpose, and action from all community members, beginning with elected leadership." We, the community, have been unified in action since October, and we are asking the City of Pasco to adhere to their own call to action outlined in that resolution and draft new resolution condemning the genocide being carried out in Palestine and the colonial apartheid state of Israel carrying it out, as well as an immediate ceasefire. That is all for me, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Carl Bettner. I live in Spokane, but I'm like one block outside the city limits. And so, um, by way of background, the reason I'm here is because you are a voice, you are leaders, and not only that, you know other leaders. You can get on the phone and speak with other leaders who can influence decision-making, okay? Never in my life have I seen what's going on in Gaza. It's, it's, it's horror. Now, we are all paying for the bombs that are being dropped on Gaza. Seventy percent of the residences in Gaza have been destroyed. Only one-third of their hospitals are functioning, and at that, barely. 1.1 million people are on the verge of famine because there are seven entrances to Palestine, and Israel has only opened two of them, and those have lines of trucks backed up because of bureaucratic hurdles that have been put in place by Israel. It's an organized genocide against the Palestinian people. Surely you can see that it must stop. It must stop. It's like enough is enough. Over 31,000 dead, over 70,000 injured, no place for the injured people to get healthcare. Now, what I'm asking you to do is simply call for an immediate ceasefire, please. And then additionally, call on Israel to open up its borders so that aid can get in to feed the starving Palestinian people. That's what I call on you to do in terms of a resolution. But more importantly, please call everyone you know in state government, federal government, and urge them the same upon our president and Congress, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carl, for making the trip down. Um, before we move on to the next one, I will note that the clerk, uh, offered a comment very similar along these lines from Ms. Amber Bruce, who is all, who is a Pasco resident, um, unable to make it due to personal issues. Um, hope, I wish her well, hope she gets better. Uh, but also seeking City Council Resolution, uh, seeking an immediate ceasefire. So I didn't want to read that into the record and note that for the record that Amber Bruce did make that comment, uh, and again wishing her, uh, well with her illness. Do we have any additional public comment? I know we're going to have a handful of folks from the business community. I know, Mr. Lincoln, we have some stuff teed up for miscellaneous discussion. Uh, my thought here, Jaime, and I apologize to keep you at work here, but, uh, let's kind of call an audible, maybe get the other folks who aren't related to the downtown business issues to have their public comments, and then, um, we will bring forward, well, I guess we probably need a motion to bring forward our miscellaneous. Um, yeah, I caught that email a little late, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I would, I think it'd be wise if we could dovetail miscellaneous into those public comments. So maybe what we do is, uh, anyone who's not here to speak on that issue, make your public comment. For anyone seeking, and I see the hands, um, I recognize it. Um, anyone who's interested in speaking, once I finish, you're up. Anyone else who's interested in speaking on the downtown business issue, sit tight for a second. What we'll do is we'll close public, I don't know, I don't know how we can do that.
Mr. Hyde is filling in for Mr. Erickson tonight, but, um, I, I would suggest allow for a public comment to conclude and then make a motion to move miscellaneous up, and we can, we can present.
Uh, you can present, we'll allow for public com- or comments.
That's up to the discretion of the chair.
I mean, I, I don't want to close public comment to people that we're presenting to, so, um, I guess for now, just if you got public comments, we'll, we'll, we'll take public comments. I'd like to figure out a way where we could kind of merge the two issues of public comment and miscellaneous discussion so that you're not making comment and then waiting to the end of the meeting. Um, so ideally, if someone has another public comment, go ahead and make it, and we'll try and figure out on the fly how we're going to handle this. Uh, not Mr. Cortinas, the lady had a hand up. Yeah, so the lady with the hand up, come on up.
My name is Mary Mahoney. I reside at 5017 West Pearl Street in Pasco, Washington. My property is in the floodplain. Um, for the record, um, on April 1st, 2019, I addressed the Pasco City Council regarding the destruction of our floodplain, as well as, um, due process and constitutional violations by Tri-City Animal Control. Also, I had a verbal exchange with the city attorney, Lee Kerr. Mr. Kerr stated the Washington State University and Tri-City Animal Control Contract had been terminated and that Mr. Kerr would provide to me a termination agreement. I never received it. Also, the video of the Pasco City Council meeting on that night, 4/1/19, has been deleted from the archives. The minutes are there, but they're incomplete. Also, I would like to state via RCW 42.56, this evening I do request, and I'll put this in a, um, proper request, all documents, materials, and electronic communications, including those of executive sessions regarding the time, date, and place in which the LID sewer and water lines will be installed in the floodplain. Uh, see tonight's agenda, number 4432. I will give the, um, list of the parcel numbers, um, 119-111-050, uh, parcel number 119-111-069, parcel number 119-112-031. Um, this is for the record, and I am putting the City of Pasco on notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any additional comment?
Mayor Serrano and Councilmember Dave Cortinas, 411 West Clark. I just want to, uh, give you thanks for the opportunity for the Latin Business Association to be part of the Cinco de Mayo here in Pasco once again. We are very grateful and thankful in being part of all the decision makings and being at the table, and we're working very hard and weakly with, uh, with Jesse. He has been music to my ears. He has been great to work with. We have enjoyed working with him. And, uh, there's been three of us from the, uh, Latin Business Ocean working with him, and we're really, uh, excited that we were asked to come to the table. We, uh, look forward to an exciting Cinco de Mayo, lots of changes, lots of new things are going to happen. And just to make it clear, Latin Business Association is not interested in making money. We're not interested in making any money. That's not what we're here for. We're here to help the City of Pasco to have a great festival and to be able to invite our members and all the downtown business owners to be part of this Cinco de Mayo, which has never happened in the years past with inviting each and every single member or business owner to be part of this, this, uh, great, uh, event. It has been pretty much an exclusive, like an exclusive club of people running things. This year, that's not going to happen. This year, we are inviting everyone to participate. We're inviting, uh, dignitaries and, and others, and we're changing the format and the way the things are happening. Jesse has been a big support in all the ideas and all the things that we have brought to the table, and we're going to save money, and we're going to make money so that we can have a great festival and we can be able to include the entire community, business owners, and your staff to be participating in this Cinco de Mayo. Again, on behalf of the Latin Business Association and all those that are involved in, in making this Cinco de Mayo this year a profitable and a good festival for the entire community. On behalf of the Latin Business Ocean, we want to thank you once again for allowing us to be part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortinas. Um, Mr. Phil, in City Attorney, you got any thoughts on how we bump miscellaneous without closing? I know we have additional comments, I get that. I'm not cutting anyone off, but I'm trying to, trying to buy you some time and me some time on figuring out how procedurally we keep it open while moving miscellaneous simultaneously.
Well, may I just suggest a, a motion to, uh, separate the, the comments into the two different groups? I think you're talking, if there are just two. Uh, motion made and seconded would be an amendment to the agenda.
So, so then maybe what we do is we, uh, seek to achieve all comments that are non-downtown business-centric at such a point, then we can make that secondary motion and separate them and then roll those in?
Or, or you could make the motion at the beginning of that and separate them out and say, um, other comments, the downtown business convers- uh, conversations or comments could be made subsequent to the general comments. Either way.
Um, I, I think that's the best way, because again, I don't want the folks down here to be stuck until the end of the night, so, um, I'm happy to make that motion unless someone's got one offhand. All right, well, with that, um, at this point, before we get on to public comment, I move to, um, separate out item. Let me see, item number six, public comments whereby we'll retain a, a time, uh, for the folks, uh, impacted by the Lewis Street overpass in the downtown business corridor to have separate public comment, um, in which we can address items reserved for miscellaneous discussion. Does that work?
It should.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from council? Okay, hearing done, uh, all in, uh, should we do a roll call on this, or does it matter? Just, uh, the voice vote's fine?
Yes.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so just with that, so you can explain, um, we're going to finish other public comments, and then what we'll do is we'll have our staff present some issues that they have related to the downtown businesses, and then we'll allow for public comment in coordination with that. Okay, with that, uh, the other non-downtown business public comment, may resume.
Hello, my name is Annalisa Ely. I'm from Kennewick, and I am a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. The genocide of Palestinian people in Gaza by Israel has been going on for five months, and now Israel has begun its invasion of Rafah, where 1.5 million Palestinian refugees are packed into an area of only 25 square miles. Israel has already shown its willingness to commit war crimes with its repeated attacks on hospitals and ambulances and its willingness to kill children, over 12,000 confirmed so far. With over 30,000 Palestinians killed, if the invasion of Rafah continues, that number will skyrocket. Israel is also starving the people of Gaza, another war crime that is made easier by the fact that Israel has restricted the amount of food going into Gaza for the last 17 years. Twenty-one people in Gaza have now been confirmed to have died from malnutrition. A resolution by this city council condemning the genocide and the apartheid carried out by Israel would show the people of Pasco that you are taking a stand against the rise in Islamophobia and anti-Arab hate that has risen all across the country and that threatens your constituents. Additionally, you owe it to your constituents to take a stand on where over 800,000 federal tax dollars go every year from Pasco. Right now, that money goes to fund bombs, chemical weapons, and tanks used to kill civilians. The US government is Israel's main support, and Biden has the power to stop this invasion and the power to cut off aid, allowing Israel to continue this genocide. If you, the city council, join with your constituents and at least 48 other cities who have passed resolutions for a ceasefire, together we can send the message to DC that the people of this country do not want our tax dollars funding a genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, non-downtown business-centric public comment?
Yeah, my name's Jim Foreman, and I live on Sylvester Street, and I'm here to talk about the driveway openings that, uh, you guys, somebody passed a couple of years ago, and I'd like to get it so that the driveway openings on everybody that lives on Sylvester Street will get the driveway opening that's already there, not reduced down to 40 feet or whatever the, the issue is here. I mean, my house was out there 60 years ago. That's, that's 40 years before Pasco ever got there. Um, I think that's the least that can happen. I mean, the, I don't know if everybody looked at the drawings of what they're gonna, what they planned to do. Well, I mean, I watched the projection thing a year ago, a little over a year ago, and I call them cartoons because they're three-day, 3D dimensional, and they don't give you any dimensions. Um, basically, when the city came in and they put the sewer down, they took away my sidewalk. The, the street center line moved 18 inches to the south. There, you can't park a car there, everybody commented on it. Well, this new deal, they're going to go out from my property approximately six feet, and they're going to raise it up a foot, and then they're going to put asphalt in for a bike path. But the, on the opposite side of that to my property is a two-to-one slope, and I don't think it's fair. That should have been a sidewalk, a cement sidewalk on my side of the street. But anyway, I'm sure it's not going to make any comment of it, but I would, would suggest, instead of looking at, you guys need to actually look at the drawings and see what I'm talking about. It's really, I don't think it's going to improve Sylvester Street. And the other comment I got to say is, the, uh, deal in the paper here a couple of weeks ago, we're going to patrol the area, we're going to slow down traffic. You know, it'd be really nice if you'd do it now. I mean, come on, average speed down Sylvester Street's 55 miles an hour, and they're going better than that. Anyway, thank you much.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on. Um, typically here, we would move on to item number seven, but I think, Mr. Milne, that, I don't think we actually moved up miscellaneous discussion, did we? With that, did we effectively do that with that motion?
I, what I, what I con- what I contemplated of the motion was that you were just separating the public comment period into the two different divisions.
Yeah, and, okay, so then I think we need a second motion to move up, uh, miscellaneous discussion, at least insofar as it relates to the downtown business corridor.
So I'd like to make a motion that we move number 12 miscellaneous discussion, um, move it up immediately as unto right now. That way it gives the constituents a chance to talk about this matter, so.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Harpster.
I just want to make sure we're careful that councilmembers up here don't engage in dialogue back and forth with public commenters, that we have public comment, that that closes, and we have a miscellaneous discussion potentially addressing comments heard tonight, but that it doesn't become some kind of back and forth.
No, I don't, I appreciate that, and that certainly wasn't my intent, was that, you know, we'd have staff present the miscellaneous discussion, and then we could have the commenter's response to the information provided. At that point, we will close comment and move on to item number, I guess, eight, um, sort of, um, which would be reports from committees and officers, so. So that was, uh, my intent with the original motion. Yeah, well, we're, I don't know, anyway.
Good, uh, thank you, Mayor. Can we still retain a miscellaneous discussion at the end?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that, yeah, I mean, I, yeah. I think it works for me. Okay. All right, with, with that, uh, let's just, I think we can do a voice vote. We don't need a roll call for that, right? Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Oh, sorry. Say nay, none, so it passes unanimously, sorry. It's, it's been a long week already. Um, so with that, Mr. Lincoln, I'm not sure who on staff is going to kick this off.
Deputy City Manager Sigell is going to start the presentation, and we may have, uh, Public Works Director Sarah who chimes in as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, we have, uh, Lou Street update, um, overpass update today. Uh, essentially, three major sections, unless, uh, council has any, um, questions, uh, talking about the construction update, especially around signage, um, what work staff has been doing regarding advertising, uh, and then the grant, uh, essentially the funding discussion. Uh, the first portion, which is the signage and the construction update, uh, we have Maria Sarah, who is, uh, virtually attending the council, um, meeting today, so I will, um, pass this on to Maria Sarah, who's our interim Public Works Director.
Just a moment, please.
While we're working on that, um, I, I will move forward a little bit, um, on the presentation itself. Um, and when, when Ms. Sarah is able to attend, we will move back to this. Uh, next slide, please. So overall, in terms of advertising, there was a discussion last week, uh, that council was asking for direction um, in terms of, uh, or staff was asking, uh, of direction from council uh, regarding advertising and what kind of packages, um, or costs, um, council was comfortable with. Uh, there's a lot of things that staff is already doing, um, that is not exactly budgeted, but definitely warranted for a project of this size. Um, and something that staff can handle, um, uh, in terms of budget impact. Is this better? I will lean in. Um, so overall with advertising, um, staff is working on, uh, more of a, a package that is as impactful as possible. Um, I was just, uh, mentioning, um, uh, that this is not, the, all of these are not exactly budgeted items, but definitely minimal enough in the impact that can be absorbed, uh, within the city's operations. Um, so these are some of the advertising avenues that, um, staff has utilized to communicate with public regarding the Lou Street overpass, um, and the state of the businesses, who's open, what's the signage, um, layout, things like that. Um, so we've been, uh, working with many different, um, media avenues uh, to ensure that we reach to as many people as possible. In terms of financial support, um, uh, staff, uh, presented to council last week that we had just hea- heard from HUD and, um, there, there are funds available, um, that can be utilized, which is the micro enterprise grants, um, as well as utility assistance. Um, there's about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, of funds available in CDBG. Um, that was allocated for Lou Street, second to Fifth Avenue construction. Uh, essentially the improvement of Lou Street from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. Uh, we could utilize this fund. Um, I would also say that there's, um, allo- other allocations within CDBG, um, that have been expended, not fully. So if council is interested in coming back with more funds, that's something that we'll have to look at and see uh, what are the work that we need to completely stop to move forward. Um, I will, uh, we also, um, reached out to many of the businesses, um, on Friday and, uh, we had staff go in door-to-door. I'm not sure, um, how many of the businesses were able to directly talk with, uh, with the staff, but uh, one of the themes that emerged from that discussion was that there was definitely business impact, but giving an exact number on how much the revenue impact was, was something that, uh, was not easily, um, uh, businesses were not easily able to calculate. Uh, for example, um, I think across the board, uh, many of the businesses use the fifty to sixty percentage uh, decrease in businesses, some more, some less, uh, but that was the average, uh, but when, um, it is time to know exactly how much is the revenue lost, um, they needed to go back to the accountants, maybe do a little bit more calculation, maybe do their taxes, so it's, and that makes sense because, you know, and not, no same day is, no day is the same, uh, in terms of revenues and so um, we were not able to get an exact, not an exact number, but even a, um, even an estimate of how much is truly, um, the impact so far and how much is the impact estimated to be in the future. So, um, staff felt like it was the right place to go with at least the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that uh, is available easily via the CDBG, uh, funds. And where the HUD or CDBG has told us, we can utilize this grant for essentially micro enterprises. So, this one is really important. Uh, micro enterprise for, for HUD is five FTEs, which is full-time employees. Uh, there's a number of hours calculation, so you could have ten headcounts, so you could have ten employees, but if they're all working part-time, like half the day, then that would be five FTE, so that's how they calculate it. Um, and another, um, point, um, to remember is that that also includes the owner. So, this is truly for very small businesses, uh, and, um, they require at least two years of tax information. Um, and we do believe that having kind of the first quarter of tax submittal, either to IRS or the Department of Revenue in Washington State, um, between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four would really give us a good idea of what a, what the revenue impact is. Um, and be able to allocate the funding, um, accordingly. Uh, we could also do utility assistance as well with CDBG funds, um, and, um, and help more directly, more easily. Um, it's always really hard when you're having to ask for people's, um, tax information because, um, you know, money is personal, tax information is personal, it's really hard to, uh, let go of that and give it to, um, somebody else that is not IRS or DOR. So, um, utility assistance is a little bit easier to, um, allocate very quickly. Um, in terms of allocation amount, um, definitely open to council. We did, uh, a recommended amount here, just um, very much a peanut butter approach at this point, but, um, if you were to, uh, allocate three hundred thousand to micro enterprise grant, uh, about twenty, twenty-five businesses impacted, um, you're looking at about fifteen to twenty thousand if all of them qualified. So if you wanted to make that a limit for each business, uh, also allocating about seventy thousand um, to utility assistance, um, that would also come to about thirty-five hundred per business, um, if all of them qualified uh, for this program. Um, these are just high-level, uh, rec- program requirements at this point. Uh, there might be some other, um, more detailed requirements. This is economic development, this is, um, uh, this is more of a helping the businesses thrive and retain, uh, employees or retain their business. So there might be requirements that, that there will be from HUD for after the business is helped. So, that they needed to remain open or they cannot be laying off, uh, re- uh, uh, more employees. Um, that kind of requirement, we've not gotten that clarification yet, but that might be something that might come with, with those funds. But this is the mo- least amount of red tape, um, and what we can do in this scenario with the CDBG or the HUD funds at this time. Um, a, a little bit of a bad news, um, is that there is a thirty-day of notice period that we have to give because how we allocate our CDBG funds is there's a thirty-day notice period, there's people who apply for those grants and now we are, we're revising what the usage are, so we need to do the exact same thing again because this is a pretty big change from what we've already adopted. Uh, it needs to go to Planning Commission, then it needs to go to council, which I believe requires a public hearing, and then you pass it. Uh, and then the funds are available. And so this is significant amount of time, um, especially the thirty days, but we could do some special meetings for council and the Planning Commission to make sure that that timeline is a little bit more expedited. Ms. Sarah, are you able to speak at this time?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I am so sorry for the technical difficulty. So, some of the things that we've been doing, um, in this past week is we have established our business meeting, which happens every Thursday at two PM, so this last week, um, that occurred. Uh, those meetings are both in Spanish and English and it's, uh, varies in locations. We rotated between two different businesses so far. Uh, there's two businesses located along Lou Street, between First and Second Avenue and that's where, uh, the meetings are held. Each week, we decide where the meeting is gonna be in coordination with the business owners. In those meetings, we discuss any upcoming changes to traffic provisions, any suggestions for changes to the signage, improvements to the, to the existing signage, and any other questions. Uh, some of the items to, that came up this last week had to do with the process for claims, um, issues with vehicles being towed or ticketed for being parked in the alley. And so we are there to hear and understand what the concerns are and then explain what, uh, could be anticipated in the following week. Uh, at each of those, um, meetings, we provide a map like the one that you're seeing on the screen, um, which includes specific activities that will occur in the upcoming week. So this next Thursday, we'll be releasing our next map with what activities we anticipate, uh, performing next week. Um, so we talked about the business meetings, we talked about the map and, um, what are the current traffic provisions? Well, traffic provisions are currently consistent with that map you're seeing. There is, uh, lim- very limited access, um, on Lewis between First and Second. Uh, while businesses can be accessed from First Avenue, um, Second Avenue onto Lewis is limited to jazz movements onto the west or from the west to the north. Uh, so there's some limitation there for the tying of the bridge to Lou Street alignment. And then, uh, this week specifically, there is a closure of one day that will occur tomorrow on First Avenue, just under that new smaller bridge that was installed. That's to allow for some irrigation installation. And so, um, what you're seeing is really what is happening today. We did receive very valuable feedback on some of the placing of the signs that indicate that the businesses are open. So there's revisions being implemented alon- along with, uh, additional signage to be placed at First and Ace Street, uh, to indicate access to businesses for those that have taken the detour coming from both Oregon or Fourth Avenue. So we are creating a new clear path for, um, customers to access the businesses from First Avenue. With that, uh, it is worth mentioning that alleys have been, uh, visited, both walked and driven, uh, to identify that they are both open and clean to allow travel, access, and parking, helping the customers access those doors on, again, between First and Second Avenue specifically, the ones that are the most affected for the construction in the front doors. Um, and we have heard the concerns about vehicles being towed and also being ticketed for being, uh, parked in specific locations, specifically in the alleys. So both Public Works Department and Police Department have been working hand-in-hand to try to avoid that situation and allow for parking to, uh, remain accessible for everybody so that, uh, the, uh, businesses can still receive their customers. Um, and finally, the contractor has been directed to work an additional day each week and this is in an effort to expedite the delivery of the improvement. At this time, uh, we are hesitant to establish a new date. Um, just because we are doing underground work and we all know what happens with underground work in civil projects. Uh, there could be surprises. So we are working this week on groundwater and, uh, groundwater infrastructure installation and sidewalk removal. Um, we are hopeful that next week we will be able to adequately assess what is the time that we have saved and whether it is worth continuing the, uh, fifth day of work above the forty hours that the contractor was working in four days, uh, to the remainder of the project to then expedite the completion of the project. And with that, there was a lot of information, but I, hopefully I covered all the items you were hoping to hear.
And with that, um, we're open for any questions that council or the public might have.
Yeah, I'd say let's, uh, open it to council first and then to the public and then we can swing back to council if we have any additional comments. Mr., uh, Morales.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Uh, I really appreciate the staff working on this. I know I've been probably difficult to be working with, but this, uh, issue has been really sensitive and we've been needing to work really fast. So I appreciate, um, the promptness on a lot of the signage and working with the downtown businesses. I attended the last two, um, community meetings. Um, I'm just gonna cut to the chase. I think, I think we need to approve the CDBG funds and approve the, you know, staff recommended amounts, um, for the assistant, for the utility assistance. Um, I would go for, uh, I would go on to say that I would recommend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of CDBG funds um, for the impacted businesses and then we, from there, we can, um, prepare an application process and, um, start getting relief to these businesses. I'm open to speeding up the process with special meetings, what have you, um, you know. We can, I'm looking forward to the rest of the council's comments, but I think we need to get this money out and citizens out as fast as we can. Thank you very much.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Ross.
If we can scroll to the, where you have the amounts for utilities and all of that. There, oh, right there. So, the utility assistance, is that to include rental?
No, um, HUD will not allow for rental assistance, just utility assistance.
Their light, their water or whatever else.
Water, electric, garbage.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the amount between fifteen to twenty, is that per business? For, it's, it's a one-time lump sum?
One-time lump sum per business, yes.
Okay. Alright, do we know, again, this is my last question. Do we know, uh, the application process, who will be managing those applications or the selection process of those that qualify for the, for the assistance?
We do have our CDBG administrator who manages all of the CDBG funds, um, and this is a specialized role um, because of, uh, the, the significant complications of HUD guidelines.
Big Mayor here, Rich, sorry, Rich.
No, um, I apologize. Let me repeat that.
Thank you.
Um, the question was, uh, who will be, um, managing the program? And we do have CDBG administrator within the city staff, whose job is to manage all of the CDBG funds. Um, so she would be well-qualified, um, to ensure, um, that all of the guidelines are followed, that, uh, she can help all of the businesses with the process and ensure that, um, it is easy, but also that it follows the HUD guidelines.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Deputy Director Sigdell.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Morales. Uh, Mr. Grim.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions for staff here. As far as the CDBG grant, was that money earmarked for something else before and how is that process gonna work?
Yes, so, uh, the, the money, the three hundred and seventy-five thou- seventy thousand dollars that, um, we mentioned here is allocated for a construction project for Lou Street, uh, that goes from Second Avenue to Fifth Street. So, um, we will have to figure out what we do with those funds at a later date when we are working on the construction of that project. So we would be taking it out of that project, utilizing it for this effort.
Also, that's a project that's not fully funded yet, so it's not a project that's imminent tomorrow, so there, there's more to put towards that project still.
Okay, and then I just curious, how do we, I guess, how do we reconcile this with being non precedent setting elsewhere in the city? Because I see construction projects all over and, you know, how would we as a council differentiate this with maybe what's going on at Broadmoor, anything like that?
I think w- one, one of the things is, uh, definitely a micro enterprise, but you could have that across the city. Um, but this is a council decision to move forward and allocate the funds as you see fit. Um, there's always, uh, programs that are done in a specific area of the city, so that, there might be some justification there.
Okay, no, thank you. And I'm all for helping, you know, businesses. Several of us are business owners up here too, but at the same time, with our massive development we have going on here, I'm just wondering how we separate, you know, these to say, you know, well, this group gets help for this project, but, uh, and how we're gonna differentiate that from somewhere else would be just one of the questions I have about this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Ms. Blaisdell.
Um, I just want li- a clarification on, is it, you said physical location, so if it was like a beauty salon and there's multiple business license within that location, the owner of the business would have to decide how to split that between the business license. How does that work?
Uh, very likely. I think those are program details that we will have to figure out as we go. Um, salons are always a tricky one because of how they are administered as in, you know, each spot is licensed out. Um, but we we will have to work through that. Um, really depends on the available funding. You're looking at fifteen to twenty thousand with the assumption that there's about twenty to twenty-five businesses who are impacted. Um, so larger that number grows, so we can pull out all of the business licenses and basically take the three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty if council, uh if that is what council decides and divide that by the number of businesses and you can come up with uh with that upper limit.
Okay, and I have one other question. Uh, a business owner, a couple of business owners um made a comment to me that were closer to the Griggs area and expressed that um he's been getting notices and neighboring businesses have been getting noticing, notices up to three years that this was going to take place. Is that correct to uh basically plan first this happening?
Yes, uh, the city has been communicating regarding this project for a very long time. Um, it's been a long-running project. Um, so I believe uh at least in two thousand eighteen, uh Ms. Sarah might be able to um give us more information on that. Um, but w- we have been communicating um about this project with the community for a very long time.
So the business owners that are directly affected, were they aware that they were, could possibly have to close down during this time period?
I'm not sure if I could s- speak uh on that with certainty.
I'm asking like, are, did we get that notice coming from us?
Hold on for that.
I I think that's best to ask the businesses directly. I I think the concern would be if they were open during a certain period of time or uh if s- if staff specifically received it or not. I think that's probably best for our audience members.
We'll we'll have a chance to address that with you. I apologize. Yeah, now just, are you done? Okay, uh, Mister Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I know when we were talking about if we could expedite this and and I'm all for helping the businesses of downtown Pasco. Can you kinda, Mrs. Sigdell, can you kinda, like, would that be extra council meetings, like on other nights or? Um, and do we have like a kind of a timeframe? Because I mean, all of us have meetings, we have other things. Uh, I'm all for trying to counsel stuff, but uh would it be like, do you have any idea what it would be and how soon this would be if we were to expedite it?
Uh, yeah, at at the very least, you will get at least a month of advance. Uh, because we have to um advertise for thirty days for this change. And then you'll have to go to Planning Commission, which we can also do a special meeting as soon as that period is over. Um, so you're not, you're looking at at least thirty days. Um, and then a Planning Commission meeting and then a then a public hearing with council, which we can also expedite and let you know, kind of hold the council on when you're available to do that. Uh, and then another meeting to actually pass it.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. And then I'd got a email from Thomas Gronwell Granwell, so about uh doing something in Peanuts uh, you know, park as far as trying to help those businesses. Is that a viable option? I don't know if you've seen that email or?
Yes, um, I think that's something that staff has been looking into and and we will get back to you on that one.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I just wanna make sure that that was, uh, I thought it was a great idea. So anything we could do to help, I'm all for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mister Milne, Mister Harpster. Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Sigdell, can we theoretically? Uh, sorry, can we theoretically then make a motion tonight? Start the thirty-day clock tomorrow? Would be as early as that or?
I believe so. It 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 should be pretty close. I need to look at uh some of the newspapers advertising timeline. Sometimes we have to give them earlier notice. Uh, but um if you do a lot, I don't, I don't believe that a motion is necessary. We can, we can move ahead with, um, if if all of council um agrees, then we can move ahead with the what what's on the screen and start that process of notification first. Um, and then if there's any um concerns, we still have about a month to address.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I would advise you do make a motion to memorialize and to to make sure that that's the direction that council wants to give staff. Happy to take that motion this evening if that's the direction that council wants to go.
And then second part of my question, can we do like we've done in the past, special meeting at seven P M for the public hearing? And then at seven fifteen, regular scheduled meeting, then approve that or would there need to be a week? Okay.
We can do that.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mister Morales.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Um, yeah, no, I I to to answer Councilmember Grim's um point earlier. Again, this is something I'm gonna bring up in our retreat. Um, you know, we talked about many programs we could start. This is definitely gets the, you know, gets the brain going about future stuff. But but, you know, I think the thing about this is that, you know, these businesses showed up one day and they couldn't even access their their buildings. Um, so, I mean, then they were directly impacted and and I have seen emails about um businesses, you know, businesses being told, you know, this has been going on for three years. I mean, I I'll just use this as an example. You know, when I was campaigning, people didn't even know who the council member was of that district. People live their daily lives, they just go about their, you know, they don't know what's going on half the time. They're worried about putting money, you know, you know, food on the table, taking their kids to school. So I'm not surprised when people don't know what's really going on. And so, um, you know, I think we need to be do do a better job of doing that. Um, that's why I, you know, I've been down there, talking to business owners, getting, you know, putting a face to the to the city a little bit. And so has the staff. They've done a great job. Um, you know, Maria Sarah's, um, Maria Sarah's been down there. Um, they they sent Gina Vasquez and other people. So, you know, I I think we need to get get out of our bubble sometimes and really tell people what's going on. But, you know, I mean, I went down there, I mean, you you couldn't access the bill and the businesses. I mean, it was tore up and, um, you know, we can sit there and say, you know, well, this has been going on for twenty years that people knew. Sometimes people just don't know what's going on. And and again, um, that this is a learning opportunity for us. And so that's the way I look at it as, I know, we don't wanna be on the reactive side of this, but from what I'm seeing tonight, I think the staff has done great work and and we have a path. We have, you know, I don't wanna talk about problems, we're actually talking about solutions. And so, like I said, I I'm proud, you know, I'm glad that the staff has done what they've done. And so, you know, um, I'm eager to get to pass some um motions tonight and kinda get the ball rolling on this.
Thank you, Mister Cross. Um, I recognize Mr. Graham and Ms. Ross. Before that, I'm um presumably Ms. Sigdell. Have we worked with any of the local chambers of commerce or anyone else to seek their ability to fund or desire to do the same?
Uh, yes, we um, we've um not directly asked for assistance, kind of knowing their situation as well, but we've definitely reached out to them. Um, in fact, um, our Pasco Chamber of Commer- Commerce and TRIDEC were the first two agencies that reached out to our uh legislators, asking them if there was anything that they could um, that they could do for us, kind of a last-minute uh funding request. Um, so um, we've also, we have um a representative um here uh from um, I'm not going to call her out, um, but um, we've been working with some of the partners, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We've not directly asked them uh for funding and if there's anything available from their organization. Uh, but we've definitely asked um for their knowledge and if they know of anything that is available that can uh help the businesses.
Okay, so my request to staff is do it. Um, I guess that's more of a statement rather than a request, but it's polite, so please do it. Um, and also seek the opportunity of these organizations where they might be able to fundraise.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, there are certain things that we as a city, as a municipal corporation cannot do. Um, but they as either nonprofits or other entities have the ability to access funds potentially that we don't. Um, so please not only follow up with them about their ability to chip in, but also their ability to help subsidize elsewhere. Um, with that, uh, looks like Mister Grim.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just one last follow-up question maybe for staff. Is there a um geographic boundary we're doing on this? Or is it just anybody within a few blocks that can prove they were affected in some way? Or is there something within the community where somebody four blocks away says, well, we were affected a little bit, but maybe we won't apply for the grant and let those more directly impacted get the funds? Because the more, you know, this money gets spread out amongst people applying for it, the more it's gonna get diluted. And, you know, I just, you know, if we're gonna do something like this, I would like to see it help those who need it the most rather than just kind of being a free-for-all or whatever. So I don't, I don't know, maybe it's more of a comment than anything, but there's the the nods I'm seeing, maybe there's no boundary and just?
Um, I I think we can create the boundary. I hesitate to give you a distinct answer because that is something that we are uh going to have to work with HUD on um be- given that we have to work within their guidelines and what we can include and exclude. Um, so uh definitely this whole area, um, the downtown area is is eligible technically. Um, but uh you talked about dilution, so we have to be careful about that. So we have to figure out how how we can manage this.
Okay, yeah, no, and you guys, I mean, w- we all feel for you guys and we want to see you guys do help. I mean, I was down there last week with, my business has six thousand followers from the other end of the city, trying to do a Facebook Live, trying to bring attention to it. And so I know yeah, our our heart is with you guys and we'll we'll see what we can do here. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Ross.
Thank you. Mine is like, it's not exactly a question, more like a comment. Uh, and it kind of uh piggybacks off what uh Councilman Grim was saying. Um, basically by doing this, if we follow through, we're basically opening the doors for anyone affected in any construction along any other construction going on in the city of Pasco to reach out and apply for these benefits. Correct?
With CDBG funds, you have to be uh within a certain census tract. So if they are not within that census tract, then we cannot use this fund. Um, there are some other projects that qualify within that census tract that could be eligible um in the same manner that um um this particular geography is.
Okay. Um, and just an added comment, I drove by um all the way from, uh, what was it, A Street? I went around all these streets, Sylvester, Clark. Um, I figured out how to drive by to get into one particular section of the street that had about ten cars parked in front of it. Um, I figured it out. I drove through the alleys. I drove at two different times of the day. Um, there seems to be a flow of traffic. There seems to be people that know what business they wanna go visit, will figure out a way to get there. And that's kind of what I did. I made it over to uh Pedro's Gym. I drove around because I was trying to figure out why he had so many cars in front of his building. Um, and I figured it out. I got there. Uh, there's a billard right next to him. They were open as well. So there there does need to be some type of guidance uh that we're probably not offering yet as far as signage goes, maybe blinking lights. I don't know what else we need to do. But um, you know, like I said, it took me about thirty minutes to drive around those streets and I figured out how to get to every single one of those businesses. Um, I I do agree that um some more than others have been impacted. And so, you know, if we could just figure out the way to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, um, it certainly sounds like uh we may have a forthcoming motion on this issue. That said, I do wanna turn it back to the public, um, you know, for comments on this particular issue. Um, obviously, if you're directly affected, I think your voice uh is extremely helpful in this and laying out how and maybe uh why and and your future potential impacts. You know, we've seen one business is likely closing um or closed at this point. So helping us understand those direct impacts now. And we've heard from a lot of you, so um still happy to hear it as your stories are moving targets. But um, yeah, the floor is open.
Do you have a question first? Like, I have a question about where it says second and fifth, but most of us are from first and second.
That that would be the funding for a project that that hasn't happened yet. So that that was just the source of the funding.
Okay.
I guess that answers your question about questions. Um, no, it's fine. I I didn't have that answer offhand. So um, certainly uh happy to hear from folks, um, you know. Pedro?
My name's Pedro Pasco, Movement Athletics. And uh, first of all, thank you for finding all this. That's looking like it could be good. Somebody asked, a couple of you asked, how many years have we been getting informed of the upcoming construction? Three or four years back, twenty years back? At the same time, could have been exploring these same funds that are there. So we wouldn't have this, oh, we gotta hurry up and expedite this process too. So I feel like that was kind of rude to be asking questions like that and be like, hey, why didn't they remember? Why aren't they ready? Why weren't we all ready? In defense of the businesses who are usually, most of these run by the people that own them. They're not just the owner who's directing people to run it, like franchise, like bargain grocery outlet or My Place Hotels, Ms. Blaisdell. We don't have the same kind of support and uh we don't have the same kind of organization sometimes. I have to say that with humility because it sucks to not be as organized and on top of things and being able to forecast months in advance. But some of us are aspiring to that, so I just wanna comment on that. But also say thank you for coming up with this. I think it's gonna be very helpful to to many of the businesses here. And thank you for providing a platform for many of us to speak. I know a lot of the families here are really banking on these funds to come through to support their kids because it's no joke. They're not just here going for a money grab, looking for a free hand-me-down. I come from a family that proudly never took a dime of welfare at all. They figured it out. They weren't looking for hand-me-downs. That's not the kind of people we are. But um, we do thank you and appreciate the support and you getting these items put together for us. And uh, I think I'm pretty certain that if Road sixty-eight was getting blocked off or the area by Milne Tools was getting blocked off, you'd probably be wanting to do something about it too. So I just ask you to put yourself in our shoes if Road sixty-eight area was blocked off, your hotel's blocked off in those areas and just kind of consider those things too. Again, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Valerie. I'm sure most of you are familiar with who I am. I did send out an email on the weekend, which I'm sure a lot of you got. And I just wanted to clarify something that was stated in this email. It says, what specifically is your ask? What type of help are you asking that we have not talked about? So it's hard not to take offense to questions like those because, like Pedro said, we are not panhandlers. We are hard-working people, just like everybody else. This isn't a money grab situation. This is a real-life situation. Everybody here works their business. Everybody here has busted their butt working their business. It's not something that we take lightly, having to do something like this. It takes a lot of mental work. I say that for myself because I've been kind of the coordinator of all of this. It's not something I wanna do. I don't. I do this because I have to do this. This is for the benefit of all of us. Nobody is a panhandler. Everybody works very, very hard and has been working very, very hard for their businesses. We unfortunately had to close our doors during this time because lots of bills are coming up and I can't see that we could count going lower and lower and lower. For example, tax time is coming, that first half is due, and I cannot afford to open with me going into the negatives. I just wanted to clarify that if anyone had that misconception about us, that that is not who we are. We're hard-working people. We all have busted our butt within the last six months to thirty years to be where we are right now. And um, I'm excited for this. I think this is amazing. I'm thankful that this, something like this is happening. Um, it is unfortunate that it took what it took to get us here, but it's a learning experience and at least something is going. So I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
Mister Mayor and council members, uh, the Latin Business Association uh took the lead on meeting with the this group of people. They didn't ask us to come. We went. Our mission is to support small business owners, and that's our mission. Whether if some council members don't like it, that we're involved, as we saw in an email today, which Valerie was talking about, yes, we are speaking for this gr- group of people. Everybody that is being affected, please stand up. There's a big group. Gracias. They're all affected and they need help today. So by you making the motion today, we'll move this further. We'll move this quickly. Now, these funds are much shy than what I thought. I sent you all an email and I requested, and they all know about this email. I made a request of ten thousand dollars a month for four months of forty thousand dollars per customers. Mr. Grim, they have a list of all the business owners that are being affected. That list has been turned in, about twenty-some businesses. The money that you're talking that they're moving from is from the master plan from downtown. I moved here in nineteen ninety-seven, downtown Pasco still looks the same. And I came from the Walla Walla Foundation, downtown Walla Walla Foundation Board. Look how beautiful Walla Walla downtown looks like. Something I've been requesting for downtown and in at Pasco, and nothing has happened. We're still waiting on the master plan. It's on your guys' plate and nothing has happened. As to the seventy thousand dollars, I mean hu- three hundred and seventy thousand, I'm sure they're they appreciate it. Valerie just said, we appreciate that, but I think we're gonna see more losses in the in the next two months. Today, the front of that uh area is closed down, closed down, one hundred percent. I don't know how Pedro got all those cars in front of his business, I don't believe it, but none of them has had a bunch of cars in in front of their businesses since they've been working down there, and they closed it down. It's a hundred percent shut down right now. Valerie's business just closed down, that's the third business that has closed down. We need to help them, and I hope that you do find a a time to make that motion today. It would be welcome to be appreciated, and the Latin Business Association will continue to support them. We will continue to advise them, we'll continue to work with them because that's our mission. It's to sm- help the small Hispanic business owners, and as you just saw, it's a one hundred percent Hispanic business owners. So I hope that you will take it into heart, that you will support these businesses, not just with the three hundred and seventy thousand, but even more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortinas.
Hola, mi nombre es José Caballero, este soy el dueño de Mexi Quinta Querida. Well, I can speak English, that's fine then.
And we'll be cognizant of your times a little bit extra, got it?
Mi nombre es José Caballero, soy el dueño de Mexi Quinta Querida.
I'm José Caballero, I'm the owner of the Mexican Taqueria. You wanna know what the losses have been? The paperwork for two years because I just started. Those fifteen, twenty thousand would help specifically.
Les voy a decir por qué, porque yo acabo de abrir el business. Puse como, les voy a decir unos cien mil dólares. Para empezar. Ah, y pues cerraron ahí, no hay tráfico, no hay, no hay nada, entonces voy a cerrar. Y pago de mi casa, pues renta, no? Ah pago renta de ahí, son mil doscientos. Ahorita me está ayudando la la dueña de ahí del local. Me ayuda con la mitad. Este entonces sí hay mucha pérdida porque ya no voy a poder mantener a mis hijos y mantener mi casa. So con eso, durante los dos meses que vayan a a durar a a cerrados, que yo también voy a cerrar porque pues no entra gente ahí. Ah entonces eso nos va a ayudar mucho. So pues nomás quería que ustedes supieran eso. Gracias.
Could I get clarification? I was having a hard time hearing it, uh I mean again, when you guys were both talking at the same time. I heard the part where he's not rich and family and stuff like that, but could you kind of summarize just a little bit better? It was really hard to to hear when you guys were both talking at the same time, please? All right, just to the English part.
He was just saying he was very grateful um for the um money that's gonna be coming in. He's gonna be closing his business for the next two months that it's shut because he doesn't have any people coming in. So he's not a very wealthy man, so he's getting help um from the landlord or the the um with half of it, but um he just wanted to express his gratitude for the the amount that he's being helped with today.
Yeah, porque tengo gastos, yo no nada más es ahí, sino que tengo gastos en otro lado. Y somos cuatro de familia, este, y los cuatro trabajamos ahí mismo, entonces.
And every and I remember my family works at the business, so none of us are working.
So nomás trabajamos ahí mismo.
That's all of that all of where where income comes from.
Okay, thank you, I just, it was so hard and I really wanted to hear what he had to say, so thanks.
Buenas noches. Uh mi nombre es Nelly Urbina, soy dueña de Hochos Tacos, la taquería que está en la primera Avenida y la Louis Street.
I'm Nelly, I am the business owner of Hochos Tacos on the
The first avenue.
First Avenue.
And Louis Street. I say, yo quería hacer un comentario acerca de um los clientes que aún siguen llegando a nuestros negocios.
I just wanted to make a comment about the clients that keep coming into our um business.
Gracias que llegan, gracias a Dios que llegan a a a comprarnos a nuestros negocios.
I'm very thankful that that they're coming.
Porque si no, yo yo ya hubiera cerrado mi negocio también.
Because if they hadn't been coming in, I would have had to close down as well.
Ellos me han mantenido pocos, es muy poca la venta que tengo, pero me han mantenido hasta ahorita.
My sales are really um are a little bit, but they have been sustaining me for now.
Uh es un poco a lo que me uh quisiera referirme con, por ejemplo, con Pedro también. Que si sus clientes llegan, qué bueno que le están llegando ahorita todavía, aunque busquen la manera de cómo llegar, eso es bueno.
Well, I wanted to say something along the lines of what Pedro said because even if it's a little bit of clients that he gets, it's that's uh that's something to be grateful for.
Si no, ya todos estuvieran cerrados.
Or we would all be closed.
Uh yo también soy este, uh ese es mi único ingreso que yo tengo uh para mi familia.
For my family, that's the only source of income that we have.
Uh y pues tengo que pagar todo igual, todas las utilidades, rentas, todo, todo, todo se está viniendo y y yo no estoy recibiendo, no estoy, no estoy teniendo entrada de dinero.
And um I have a lot of bills, the my utility bills, my um for the business and for my own um home, and I don't have any money coming in.
Y esta ayuda sería muy buena para todos nosotros.
Assistance is gonna be a lot of a lot of help to us.
Nos va a dar un poquito de de alivio.
It's gonna give us some relief.
Para para cada uno de nosotros y los negocios que tenemos.
To every single one of us here in our businesses.
Y tal vez podrían visitarnos por ahí para que vean qué mal estamos.
Go down there to see how well it is, how bad things are.
La la gente, este, las personas, los clientes, uh hasta, no pueden llegar, no pueden llegar a los negocios.
Uh our customers have no way of getting to our businesses.
Pero bueno, creo que es todo.
And I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Muy buenas noches a todos, muchísimas gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí. Eh mi nombre es Francisca Álvarez, tuve en salud familiar, el suite B, por la Louis Street. Soy vecino de Valeria y de Ramiro. Tengo trece años trabajando y voy a la nutrición de Herbalife.
So I'm Arturo, Francis. Francisco, I am um a business owner and I am the neighbors with um
De Valeria.
Valeria and Pedro. I am on Suite B and my business is the Herbalife.
Y tengo ya casi catorce años trabajando en ese mismo lugar, he metido todo mi dinero, mi ganancia ahí. Eh gracias a Dios, he sobrevivido, ha salido adelante, se remodeló el lugar, quedó bonito. Pero ahorita estoy invadido como nunca, estamos sin salida. Y necesitamos que nos hagan el favor de ayudarnos a todo el grupo, todos necesitamos ayuda para sobrevivir nuestros negocios. Yo nunca había sentido a a corralado, nunca.
Been there for about fourteen years, um they've been some remodeling, I've been able to get by on my business. And but now I have never seen the lack of um of customers coming in.
Ayer tuve dos clientes, me dejaron treinta y seis dólares, el día de hoy diecisiete dólares, dos clientes.
Yesterday I had two customers.
Están bloqueados todos, se van caminando por la banqueta, dejan sus carros a distancia en la calle.
And everybody has to walk um to the business, they leave their cars parked far away.
Y yo nunca he pedido ayuda hace los dos, primera vez, pero sí necesitamos la ayuda para sobrevivir todos los negocios. Somos puros latinos, cien por ciento latinos, son muy trabajadores todos. Y queremos sobresalir, ninguno cerrar, se trata de que ninguno cierre y que sobrevivan todos los negocios. Somos responsables, por eso hemos sobrevivido, tenemos tiempo, pues yo en mi caso voy cumpliendo casi catorce años ahí.
So um I've never had to ask for any sort of assistance, I swear. Um all of us there are Latinos and we are very hardworking. We have been, in my case, we have been getting by for fourteen years at that location.
Ajá, y sí les agradeciera mucho su ayuda, de verdad, para todos porque sí necesitamos la ayuda para que ninguno cierre la puerta, la verdad, de mi parte es muchas gracias a todos y feliz noche a todos y gracias.
Everyone, and I wanna see none of these businesses close uh closed down, I wanna see all of them.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Eliud Ramírez, eh dueño de Victory Cleaning Services.
My name's uh Victor.
Eliud.
Eliud. Ramírez. Ramírez, and I am the business owner of Victor.
Victory Cleaning Services.
Victory Cleaning Services.
Ya tengo, este marzo cumplí apenas dos años que abrí mi pequeño negocio y también es un negocio familiar que lo atiendo yo con mi esposa y y mi hija la mayor.
So we have a a family business that I started two years ago that um that I've been getting help with my wife and my daughter.
Entonces este es todo el ingreso que tengo yo para para mantener mi familia y pues también para pagar la renta de ese edificio que yo pago al mes mil quinientos. Todo lo poco que ahorita estoy este generando, pues es más que nada que para pagar la las rentas del local.
So everything, um I have all of my bills, like my my rent and my um my utilities. But everything that I've been making so far has been enough just to pay the um the landlord for my business location.
Entonces como desde que cerraron la calle pues no hay mucho tráfico, pues no tengo, porque luego iban clientes a al con los vecinos y le preguntaban y miraban que yo estaba trabajando limpiando autos ahí, y pues ya también así yo agarraba más clientes.
And uh since there's not a lot of uh people walking by, what used to happen was they would go to my neighbors' businesses and they would see that I was cleaning cars, so I would get clients that way.
Sí, entonces como no tengo mucha entrada de dinero, eh yo y mi esposa vamos, estamos pensando la siguiente semana ir a trabajar al field porque nosotros hemos trabajado siempre en el field. Entonces vamos a empezar a ir en las mañanas y en la tarde trabajar un rato ahí en el negocio de nosotros.
And what we've been thinking with my wife and myself is since we used to do, since we used to do um labor work um before, that's what we planned to do. Either go to work in the field in the morning and then take care of the business at nights.
Entonces también estoy agradecido por si esto ayuda, nos llega, me llega a tocar, porque pues todavía depende ver si califico, ¿verdad?, entonces.
Maybe really, and we're really grateful, it still depends to see if I qualify for the assistant, but I'm really grateful.
Y cuando ocupen se limpiar su auto pues ahí estamos para ayudarles, muchas gracias.
Need help with your auto, uh getting your car cleaned, you know where we're at.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Blanca García. Lo voy a hacer en español porque me puedo expresar mejor, puedo decir todo lo que tengo en mi mente en este momento. Blanca.
Blanca, my name's Blanca and I'm gonna be expressing myself in Spanish today because I feel like I can get my emotions out better.
Um nosotros somos los dueños del edificio del dos dieciocho West Louis Street, donde está pasando todo este asunto de la nueva construcción. Somos trabajadores, todos los días estamos ahí para pagar un mortgage, para pagar viles, tratando de sobrevivir cada día, para tener mejor nuestra familia, ¿verdad? Y siempre hemos tratado de aportar un poquito a nuestra comunidad.
So we are at two eighteen, where most of the construction is taking place. We are there daily, we're working hard because we have to take care of our mortgage, our other um bills that come in. And we also try to give back to our community.
No quiero que nos estén usando como una excusa de cosas personales que a veces suceden entre la política. Queremos que vean nuestro problema con lo que está pasando en la Louis, que no lo usen como, oh voy a atacar porque hay asuntos personales. Que no nos tomen como una pelotita que nos van a estar aventando, nos van a poner el medio. La la, el problema está aquí, los negocios estamos cerrando. Yo cerré mi beauty salon porque prefiero no arriesgar a mis clientes. Hay una zanja en medio de la calle, ah es un pedacito donde tiene que caminar mi cliente. Entonces, yo no quiero que mi cliente se lastime, no quiero que mi cliente caiga en un hoyo, no quiero que mi cliente sensarte alguna punta o algo de cosas que están en la calle.
I don't want to um, everything that we're going to, for you guys to use it as a little ball and play politics. Um I don't want anything personal to um to um to get involved. The the problem is obvious, we're here, and um you guys shouldn't play politics with it. I myself had to close because there's um, because I don't want my clients walking through the little area where they might be able to, where they might get hurt or fall into a ditch. So um I, they could easily get hurt, so I don't want any any of that from my clients.
También porque siempre ha sido un pleito el parking. Nos dejaron un po- un poco de parking temporal en lo que estaba estaba la construcción, pero siempre es ganar el parking entre nuestros clientes, entre nosotros mismos. Entonces eso también crea conflicto porque nadie quiere estacionarse lejos, todos quieren llegar cerca a nuestro negocio.
And the parking issue has always been um, it's been a struggle because we got in a signed parking spot, but our customers and our employees are always fighting, um and it creates conflict because everybody's trying to get the those parking spots.
Hasta este momento se ha perdido dinero. Nosotros tenemos que, ah como le les dije, yo tuve que cerrar. Estoy tratando de ayudar un poquito a mi esposo, él tiene un mechanic shop, es Alzaromore. Estamos tratando de de manejar la situación, ya no hay savings, no hay dinero ahorrado porque nosotros recibimos rentas de nuestros inquilinos. Entonces muchos de ellos están pagando a mitad del mes o me dan pequeños pagos como ellos puedan, porque tratamos de ayudarlos para que no cierran su negocio. Eso es lo que está pasando en este momento.
And of course I'd have to shut my my business down, but I've been helping um my husband with his business. He has a um auto shop, but we um have been struggling, um our savings are gone. And now um the um the money for from our rentals are not coming in until halfway through the month because some people can't make payments. So of course we wanna work with them and we know they're struggling, we don't want them to shut their business either.
Um, qué otra cosa se me está pasando. A ver, recuérdeme ahorita que estamos aquí enfrente. Solo eso, lo más importante que que quiero recordarles, que no nos utilicen como política. Simplemente que nos resuelvan, necesitamos ayuda económica. Y yo sé que la señora Melissa es la que nos representa en esa área, el Distrito Seis. Por favor, vaya, preséntese con nosotros, somos los dueños de esos negocios, queremos conocerla más, porque usted nos representa.
And that is just the biggest thing that I wanna leave you with tonight, um don't play politics with us. Uh just fix our issues, we're struggling um with our money. And I know that Melissa, you're the, you represent us um the Section Six. And I know that Melissa, you're the, you represent us, Section Six. We welcome you to come down there and introduce yourself to us and introduce yourself to the businesses that are struggling.
Una cosa más, también gracias al Departamento de Policía, porque ellos sí están presentándose, van y nos preguntan en qué nos pueden ayudar, eso me hace sentir un poquito más segura.
Honestly, thank you to the police department because they're always down there, willing to help us and we feel a little bit safer with that.
Gracias.
I appreciate that. Let's take a couple more comments. Obviously, if there's additional or new information or different viewpoints that have yet to be expressed, please do so. But you know, at this point, let's maybe do two or three more insofar as they're kind of repeating the same things. So again, new information, we can stay here for quite some time, but if it's just the same themes over, I think council has some ideas of where we could go moving forward.
Me está dispuesto a escuchar más de sus comentarios bajo temas diferentes, ya se, ya han recalcado algunas de las mismas cosas, así que tomaremos dos o tres más comentarios si tienen algo nuevo que agregar.
Mi nombre es Jesús Romero, soy el dueño de paletería La Japita. Y yo tengo treinta y cuatro años ahí.
I'm the owner of La Japita Paletería and I've been there for thirty years.
Y hemos pasado altas y bajas, pero no una cosa como esta.
We've gone through ups and downs, but nothing like this.
Ahora está pasando otra cosa, como ya está la calle cerrada, yo antes parqué mi truck, tengo un Isuzu NPR, lo parqué atrás y me roban las baterías, me roban una cosa y otra, entonces el policía me recomendó que lo parqué en frente y lo parqué.
So what's happening now is that they closed off my portion of the street and what I was doing before was parking my Isuzu truck behind my business. The officer told me, recommended for me to park it on the front of the business.
Sí, porque me estaban robando.
Because they were stealing stuff from my, from the truck.
Pero ahora está pasando otra cosa, como ya cerraron la calle Lewis.
But now what's happening is since they closed Lewis Street.
Y antes cruzaba mucho tráfico ahí y ahora ya no pasa nada de carros ahí y a estas horas está bien oscuro. Y hace dos días me robaron el catalizador de mi truck, que voy a pagar dos mil quinientos dólares por él.
So now since they blocked off that part of the street, that section is really dark where I park my car in front now. So what happened is that they stole catalizador.
Catalizador es el.
Catalizer. Catalizer.
Que vale dos mil quinientos dólares.
And he's had to pay for that himself, like two thousand dollars.
Es todo, gracias. Gracias.
Dile buenas noches, ahora no quiero hablar inglés.
Good evening, I don't want to speak English today.
Quiero agradecerles a todos.
I want to give each one of you thanks.
Por la ayuda que nos van a dar.
For the assistance that you guys are, for the assistance that you guys are gonna give us.
Quiero decirles que gracias de la manera correcta que lo van a hacer.
I want to give you guys thanks for the proper way that you guys are gonna do it.
Porque habemos personas que realmente lo necesitamos y demostramos la necesidad presentándonos todo el tiempo para venir luchando, pidiendo la ayuda.
And there's some of us that really do need it, we're struggling and we're here every time presenting our issues and asking for assistance.
Cuando hay personas que han firmado y ni siquiera se presentan a ninguna de las juntas.
And there has been people that have been signing forms, but they haven't been coming to the meetings.
Y pienso que no es justo como personas o negocios que tienen tiempo en esto y están teniendo muchas pérdidas, que necesitan esta ayuda, al igual que otros, que tenemos pocos, pero estamos luchando por esta ayuda y otros no.
And I don't think it's fair that they have been going through some of the same things that we have, but we have been fighting for some help.
Y pues agradezco que lo van a hacer de esta manera, para que las personas que realmente lo necesitamos enseñando las pruebas, agarran esa ayuda, para que otras personas no pierdan la oportunidad de recibir esta ayuda también, que otras sin ni siquiera presentarse o buscarlo, se van a beneficiar de la lucha de nosotros, sin ellos presentarse.
And I'm grateful for the way that you guys are gonna handle this because some people have been struggling more than others and they haven't been fighting or they haven't been in the fight like some of us.
Gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Rebeca Ortiz.
Good night, my name's Rebeca Ortiz.
El día de hoy les doy las muchas gracias por habernos dejarnos estar aquí para hablar con ustedes.
I want to give you guys thanks for allowing us the time to come in tonight and speak with you guys.
Y tal vez como ustedes acaban de decir hace rato, todo parezca muy repetitivo.
And like you said, everything might seem a bit repetitive to you guys.
Pero desafortunadamente para cada uno de nosotros, esa es la vida que tenemos ahora.
But unfortunately for most of us, that's our daily lives.
Tal vez alguno de ustedes ya han pasado por donde nosotros trabajamos, algunos otros no. Este, les recomendaría a todos que pasaran, que miraran, que pensarán que somos nosotros, ustedes se tomen el lugar de nosotros los dueños.
And maybe some of you guys have gone down there, but I would encourage all of you guys to come down and take a look and put yourself in our shoes.
Y piensen si alguno de ustedes, no sé si alguno de ustedes ha sido un negocio, algún día lo pensó, o por ejemplo, su trabajo que ahora tienen, lucharon para estar ahí, ¿verdad?
For example, maybe some of you guys are business owners or not, but for the job that you have now, you fought for that, right?
Sí, okay, yo he luchado todo el tiempo por estar en el lugar que estoy y al igual que todas las personas que están atrás de mí.
I have been fighting to be where I am and along with everybody that's behind me, we've been fighting really hard to be where we are.
Muchos de nosotros, al igual que ustedes, pensamos en el año que viene ser algo mejor, tener algo mejor para nuestras familias, como piensan, ustedes lo han pensado. El año pasado nosotros compramos una maquinaria que fue muy costosa, la cual pensamos que este año iba a retribuirnos más todavía de lo anterior.
And I imagine like most of you, we tried to plan ahead and plan for something better for our family. In our case, we bought some really expensive machinery that we thought was gonna generate more income.
Estoy aquí porque tengo cuatro hijos míos, dos adoptados, son de mi hermana que falleció. Ella me enseñó a trabajar en esto y no quiero defraudarlos.
And I am here today with two of my kids, two adopted kids from my sister that passed away and I don't want to give up fighting for them.
Tal vez algunos ustedes pensaran, está hablando para hablandarnos, no. Nunca en la vida he recibido un centavo del gobierno, no me han ayudado con comida, con renta para mi casa, nunca. He trabajado en el campo día y noche. Algunas personas que están aquí lo pueden certificar y ustedes mismos pueden corroborarlo, nunca he pedido ningún centavo.
And I, I'm not telling you a soft story. I am a very hard worker, I have never asked for any sort of assistance, rental assistance from anyone. You guys can prove that from the state or from anyone, I've always been a very hard worker, I've always worked in the fields to get by.
He trabajado y mi pensamiento, al igual de mi hermana difunta, es ayudar a mis padres que me dieron la vida, los cuales no tuvieron estudio y quiero no fallarles. No me importa ahora ya si ustedes quieren o no ayudarme, me duele porque he trabajado mucho y creo que todos nos lo merecemos, pero hemos tenido tantas juntas en las cuales ustedes, creo que ninguno de ustedes ha pensado en realidad cuál es nuestra vida.
And I am working very hard to, along with my sister who passed away, we have always worked really hard to make something better for our kids and my parents who'd never had any sort of education and.
Ahora, tal vez ustedes piensen que soy grosera, quiero que me perdonen, simplemente quiero tener fuerzas para decirles lo que siento y es, es que siento que nosotros no importamos. Pero al igual como dije hace un momento, todo esto es repetitivo, ciertamente es repetitivo, pero pónganse en mi lugar, en el lugar de todos nosotros, tenemos hijos, queremos darles una educación. Si para ustedes mi income tax de este año es cien dólares, veinte dólares más de lo que hice el año pasado, ¿en dónde está el futuro que yo pensaba para mí? Quien hubiera querido tener un negocio el año que viene tal vez hubiera pensado, oh quiero tener algo más para mi familia. Eso puede acortar mis posibilidades y está bien. Lo único que quiero es que todos ustedes entiendan que la vida de nosotros depende de sus manos, la cual nosotros sentimos que está siendo ignorada.
I don't mean to offend you guys, but like you said earlier, it might sound repetitive, but I feel like I am being ignored. For example, if my income tax was a little bit better this year or we try to make plans around that, we try to hope that our future is a little bit better, planning around that, but I don't feel that way, I feel ignored.
El día de hoy quisiera que ustedes de verdad pensaran si es justo lo que están haciendo con nosotros o no.
And I want you guys to think today if what you guys are doing to us is right or not.
Porque fue fácil decir, hace tiempo lo soy decir, vamos a dar tantos millones para esto, tantos millones para lo otro.
It's easy for you guys to say, like I heard before, a million is gonna go for this, a million for that.
Pero nosotros somos gente trabajadora, todos hemos trabajado por lo que tenemos.
But we are hard, we are hardworking people, we work for everything we have.
No pedimos por algo que no merecemos.
We're not asking for something that we don't deserve.
Quisiera que se levantaran ustedes el día de hoy, en la noche y fueran todos por ese camino y miraran si de verdad nada más el parking nos va a ayudar.
To drive through there and see for yourself if parking is gonna be enough.
Algunos de ustedes pueden buscar referencias sobre nosotros, tenemos sí muchos clientes.
You guys can ask for references, we have a lot of clients.
Nos hemos esforzado mucho.
We have been working really hard.
Este año queríamos crecer aún más, no se pudo.
This year we wanted to grow our business, but we weren't able to.
Quiero que ustedes sean conscientes de lo que están haciendo, de lo que van a hacer y de lo que nosotros merecemos. Y si nosotros, lo que ustedes nos van a dar, lo merecemos o no.
And I want you guys to be aware of what you're doing and what you're planning on doing.
Porque yo creo que todos, todos los.
And think about if we deserve just this.
No lloramos, no lloramos por gusto.
We're not crying because we want to.
Lloramos porque nos duele perder lo que forjamos.
We cried because it's, it's hard to lose what we worked for.
Como ustedes lo saben, sin saber inglés, nos hemos enfrentado a personas racistas.
And we, you probably know, if we don't speak English, we have faced racist people.
Estamos aquí.
But we're here.
Personas que dijeron que no lo íbamos a lograr.
We have people that told us that we weren't gonna make it.
Y quiero demostrarle a mis hijos que lo voy a lograr.
And I'm gonna here to show my kids that I can make it.
Voy a esforzarme y creo que todos los que están aquí también lo van a hacer.
I'm gonna strive my best and everybody here also will.
Ahora, les pido que el día de hoy duerman pensando que son you payless, que son. Cada uno de ustedes.
Go to bed tonight.
Que son pepes, porque ustedes están teniendo dinero para llevar a sus casas, para llevar a sus hijos a comer, a un restaurante.
We are gonna need to, got it?
Nosotros no podemos.
You guys have the money to go out and take your kids to eat, but we can't afford that.
Otra vez disculpen la molestia.
Again, I'm sorry.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Y que Dios los bendiga.
God bless you.
This'll be our last comment.
Hello, my name is Alvaro Enriquez, I'm the owner from Alz Automotive. And right here on the pamphlet, you have a blue, you know, to show where the pass, the two-way pass is going through, right? We appreciate the signage, but there's no sign saying that you not can cross over the bridge. Okay, this Sunday I stopped by around ten thirty or ten forty. There was a black, blue SUV that went over the bridge. Now, regarding the funds, will the city have funds to pay for a lawsuit if something happened? You know, it's just a question out there. And, you know, thank you, all right?
Come on up, you've stood twice, this will be our last comment.
Thank you, you guys, for being here and listening to everybody here. This Pedro from Mr. Henkar Watch, I just have a quick question. I don't know if people on the other side of the bridge is gonna get any help also, or yes, you guys just talking about downtown Pasco, from First Fifth Avenue or something like that?
Pregunta si va a haber asistencia para las personas que están del otro lado del puente.
And it's just, thank you guys.
Thank you, I guess just to clarify at this point, we're only looking at the geographic region within the unit, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, I know.
He is closed down, he's been pulled out for a long time.
And I don't think the finances contemplate anything beyond this side of the overpass. With that, Mr. Graham, forty-five seconds.
Perfect, no, I'll be really quick. To Albert's point there, I was down there today and I could have driven right over the overpass also. It wasn't, there were people down there working and everything like that. And Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, would it be appropriate to ask how many people are here that own food trucks and how they would feel about, you know, the possibility of being relocated to Peanuts Park if they would see that as advantageous in the short term?
I guess the question for staff is to what extent is that allowable in the code? Have we done that research?
I think if there's anyone who.
Picking ideas that we're not confident in.
Yeah, right, we had the email from Mr. Graham, I think if there's anyone who would be interested in having that conversation, Mr. Rice and myself could step out in the hallway and see if there's somebody who has that ability and we could at least get their contact information tonight and then see if that's an avenue that we can explore.
Okay.
We haven't heard from anyone that that was a desired potential, but we haven't shared that either.
Okay, thank you. At this point, public comment is closed and we've closed this element of the miscellaneous. I saw Ms. Blaze, you had your light on.
I wanted to make a motion to allocate three hundred and fifty thousand of CDBG funds and seventy thousand of utility assistance funds to assist the downtown businesses impacted by the Lewis Street overpass and protect indirect staff to make the necessary action to expedite the process in accordance with the mandate public notice requirements.
I think Ms. Bell's a comment on that.
I do have a quick question, is council voting on three hundred and fifty thousand plus seventy thousand of funds or three hundred and seventy thousand?
And that's what I'm making a motion on.
Three hundred and fifty plus seventy?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I would like to, and that is okay, we would just have to.
We would need a second before we can discuss this.
That's not, that's not the issue, the issue is that we didn't anticipate that amount, the three hundred thousand was anticipated,
so I'm not sure if that's even available in the CDBG.
It looked like it said three hundred and seventy was still available.
It's three hundred. it's three hundred as you can see it's kind of lined out here three hundred for the the grant and then another seventy thousand so the motion had been three hundred and fifty plus seventy
okay let me clarify so three hundred thousand plus the seventy
would you remake that motion with the
so I was under my impression that it said that there is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of TDBG allocated for the project
correct so if it's three hundred and fifty plus seventy you're exceeding three hundred and seventy was the only note that I was adding
so we can't exceed three hundred and seventy
that that's the amount that was allocated is three hundred and seventy total we'd have to find another source I would think for the the delta
three hundred thousand yeah
she made the motion do we need to strike it
it was seconded also
it was never seconded it was it was seconded so then I think we need to vote on it or amend it right Mr. Attorney
uh that would that would be what you're be required to do is either vote on it or amend it uh and either one would be a way to go up or down on the one and or amend it and then you'd have a separate vote on the amendment before you have the ultimate vote on the motion
okay so I wanna amend my motion to allocate three hundred of CDBG funds and seventy thousand of utility assistance funds to assist downtown businesses impacted by the Lewis Street overpass project and direct staff to make the necessary action to expedite the process in accordance with the mandate public notice requirements
second
do we have any discussion on that um I'm thinking probably the cleanest is a roll call instead of a voice sorry Crystal burning the midnight light
council member Blais now
yes
Grim
yes
Harpster
yes
Peralas
yes
Barajas
yes
Melni
yes
Serrano
no
okay six to one take care
oh can you turn the mic back on
now the cash the action before the council would be to vote on the now amended motion
wait wait no no we just
no no you you there was a motion made and it was amended by a separate motion so now what's before you is what
okay
approved with the amendment
okay so what you're telling us is we just voted on
on the amendment
moving the amendment forward
correct
now we need to vote on that motion which was a motion to allocate three hundred and seventy thousand dollars
right
the CGBG to these specific businesses
it it sounds like it's duplicitous but we're dealing with a motion and then a second motion and both take a vote
okay uh let's roll call that substantive vote at this point then Crystal thank you
council member Barajas
again this is for the three seventy yes
Blais now
yes
Grim
yes
Harpster
yes
Peralas
yes
Melni
yes
Serrano
no
all right six to one carries
with that I know is your light on on purpose Mr. Harpster Ms. Barajas you had a comment then there was also a request for for a break excuse me so go ahead and make your comment
thank you I have just a real quick uh comment in regards to some of the comments that came from the room uh for clarification there was a mention about an email I did send out an email because I was genuinely wanting to know if there was a specific ask um we had been receiving emails from other individuals um this was the second email that I had received from um uh the organizer of the meetings Valerie um so this would be your the second email that I received from you and I received um text messages from other individuals so I was my question was because I wanted to know from the group specific the specific impacted group what your ask was um versus what was the outside conversations from everyone else um I I applaud you for taking head on uh organizing and setting up these meetings and really listening to your neighbors um to all your other neighbors that are impacted um your your backgrounds your your humble beginnings um resonate um and I don't know what you think of us up here um we are all most of us are all or all of us are from hardworking backgrounds um so we applaud your efforts um it's really sad that you're going through this situation we don't want to minimize that um that difficulty um and again I I want to apologize for any misunderstanding on my email um again to genuinely ask what was the ask um we've been getting information um as much as fast as we can out to you all and so I appreciate again that you're all showing up I appreciate that you're making an effort to want to be informed and stay informed and help each other out so um I just wanted to clarify that point so thank you again for being here
alright thank you Ms. Barajas uh is a five-minute break gonna be adequate uh we'll call it five and a half so we will be back at nine oh three PM thank you
So it is nine oh five and we appreciate you coming back. So with that, we'll move on to item number seven, reports from committees and officers. Item A, verbal reports from council members. Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting this past Friday and just really briefly, they are looking at redesigning the city of Richland. How George Washington Way and Jadwin flow to where they're actually going to be one ways going opposite directions. And so that's going to be a pretty big change over there. And also, one of the things that really came out that was very concerning about the meeting was just by 2035, a hundred percent of all vehicles sold in the state of Washington, small, midsize, have to be electric. And, you know, I've been in other meetings with Franklin PUD and others. Our grid cannot support this. And I've talked to, you know, a meeting I was at the Port of Pasco. They're talking about how all new development is going to have to have ten percent of the spots will have to be charging spots. Ten percent will have to have the cables ready in the ground, but not quite charging. And then another ten percent for planned. And so this is going to disproportionately affect us here because of our continued growth and everything like that. Make everything that much more expensive or whatever. So, yeah, I just have some real concerns about how adversely some of this legislation coming from Olympia is going to impact us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Ms. Blaiso.
I did attend the soft opening of the downtown Pasco Imby- Imby- did I say that right, Adam? Italian Cafe and it's, you gotta go check it out. It's, uh, they have wine and cocktail lounge by night and lunch during the day. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Pasco High Varsity Dance Team is undefeated in the state and will be performing at the state competition this Saturday at the Akama Sundome. So I wish them luck.
Thank you, Ms. Blaiso. Mr. Perales.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I attended the Visit Tri-Cities Newly Elected Council Members Orientation. It was a really good meeting. They had a lot of good stuff happening with Ironman and the, um, like National Horseshoe Contest. Lots of, they're going to be doing a presentation here in a couple of weeks and I'm really looking forward to that. Really top-notch staff there. I was really impressed with the presentation and I'm looking forward to working with them here in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Perales. With that, we'll move on to item B, which is District Policing Model Presentation from half of the police force here. From Chief Roski.
Thank you, Mayor of Toronto's council members. Couple of years ago, we undertook the strategic plan for the police department. And you'll remember, or those that weren't here, I'm sure you reviewed our strategic plan. It identified the fact that we needed to look at the way we delivered our police services specifically in field operations to plan for the future. The police department hasn't changed the way we delivered police services to the public in the patrol standpoint for over twenty years. Recognizing that the city's changed drastically in twenty years and what it's going to look like into the future. Our staff has undertaken a long process, reviewed lots of information and came up with a plan that we call District Policing. We launched District Policing in January for Phase One, hopefully anticipate Phase Two rolling out in the summer. I'm going to ask that Captain Paramore, Lieutenant Decker and Lieutenant Pettyjohn come up and explain the model, what it looks like and what the public will benefit and you, the council members, from it as well. So, Captain Paramore.
Oh, hey, thanks, Chief. Mayor, how are you? Council, always a pleasure to see you folks. We're going to discuss quickly this little short PowerPoint that we have. Jesse, are you in charge of the PowerPoint slides? Would you click the first one, please? Oh, back it up. Okay, there we go. Why now? So the chief kind of hammered that and talked about that already. This has been in the process for several years. I will tell you that when I got promoted to the rank of captain in 2019, I was in charge of the Field Operations Division, which was forty-six sergeants and patrol officers. We are now up to sixty-two. With the help of these two lieutenants behind me, we are able to enhance and provide better services. Some of the council members have been to several meetings. They have also been to Business Watch Community Meetings, which we're going to get into. And so the goal is for District Policing is to provide community-oriented policing to the citizens of Pasco and to find solutions to problems that they're having. And the best way to hear about those problems is by being present and being at meetings. So that's the why. If you look, take a quick look at the way the city is broken up. We have traditionally had four patrol zones since I was a baby cop twenty years ago. And that model just wasn't serving us appropriately. We broke it up by calls for service, priority calls for service. We even that out to allow officers to have more unallocated time to be out patrolling and not just be responding to calls for service so they can be a little more proactive out in the community. Lieutenant Decker is going to be your District Two Lieutenant and he is from three ninety-five where the Blue Bridge is west. And then Lieutenant Pettyjohn is the lieutenant over District One, which is everything east of three ninety-five. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Lieutenant Decker. Good evening. I'll be as brief as I can. So we've already seen this from attending our Business Watch meetings. But bulk of this is just kind of reorganizing the structure of what we have for District Policing. So the District Resource Officer, the DRO, was formerly the Area Resource Officer. It's been kind of reorganized. So there is one per each district on the side, each side of the city. They will handle the normal things the area resource officers were handling. Basically, your community events, your main big functions. The difference now is with district officers, there is one on every shift on the department. So on every shift, there's a district officer to assist the district resource officers. Those will handle the district, the DOs, as we're going to, as we call them. They will handle your day-to-day contact with your citizens, your crimes, things that are happening on a daily basis. The difference is now with one officer on every shift, district resource officers not having to handle all this stuff at one time. Then the communication doesn't get lost between all shifts and between both districts. So there's constant communication happening from the sergeant to the DO to communicate with the other DOs. Nothing gets dropped between the cracks, which tend to happen when we didn't have this kind of communication or restructure. So that's the difference. You'll see the DROs will be out there doing what they normally do at the main events we have. The DOs are assigned directly to every shift. Every sergeant has one and they're utilized to handle the public outreach with the immediate problems. And those are the people that the citizens are going to make first contact with and they have an issue. And they will pass that issue on to other DOs and the, on the program.
Thank you, Council Lieutenant Pettyjohn. One of the biggest things that we are pushing for our guys is problem solving. So this slide we put before our officers as well to talk about what is problem solving. And I want to highlight a couple of the, the big things we push is we want to find tailored solutions reflective of our local needs and values, working with the people that are coming to us and expressing their quality of life issues. We have to do this by building trust with community members so that they are willing to bring their problems to us. Teach our officers to not just put a Band-Aid on it and just fix it right for that moment, but if it's something that they can to solve for everyone, so it's, it's not a problem anymore. Sometimes that's a police solution only. Oftentimes, people call us because they don't have anywhere else to turn to and some of the solutions may require other departments within the city. So we are working very closely with them to resolve these, these problems for our community members and these quality of life issues and also community partners. And that's a huge push for us with problem solving. One of the ways we are building that trust is we have some programs. Many of you have attended our Business Watch programs. If you work in Pasco, if you own a business in Pasco, we invite you to attend our Business Watch so we can discuss the problems that you are facing, that the police department can help resolve. We have community meetings. We're holding those in each district. We're holding those periodically as we grow these programs. We will have a more set time. Right now, we're doing them as often as we need to and getting the feedback from the community members, how often they would like to see those. We'll be hosting those. We hosted one community meeting already in each district. We hosted one Business Watch meeting in each district. We will continue to move forward with those. We had about three dozen community members attend the District One Community Meeting and a couple dozen attend as well District Two. Great opportunity for people to come voice their concerns and to work with the police department to resolve these issues so we can do it together. And we're encouraging people to, to contact us with their problems that police can face so we can input that data into our system. The calls for service, the, the call volume, the times that those calls are happening, et cetera. So we can pinpoint the exact locations where our officers need to spend their unallocated time so they can focus on the, the hotspots that are happening in the community at the time that they're happening.
So that's it in a nutshell. We want to be respectful of your time. So if you have any questions, let us know. If not, thank you for your time.
Councilmember Perales.
Two quick questions. I'm sure I'm going to get quick answers to.
Two.
You mentioned district-based, so the districts were divided based on calls for service?
Priority calls for service. So not just call for service. So priority calls for service are going to be those level one and two calls where someone calls nine-one-one and they need the police right now. Other calls for service, we're getting into a little cop lingo here, but three and fours are going to be your, hey, I need to file a police report because something happened. Insurance purposes, civil issues. But those priority one and two calls where they need the police right now. That's the response times that we're looking at and that's how we divided the new zones up.
Okay. And you actually answered my question number two. So thank you so much.
I read your mind.
For being so proactive.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perales, Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to tell you guys thank you. Really appreciate what you guys do in the community and making Pasco just such a great place to own a business and live. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Mr. Harpster.
Thanks, Captain Paramore. One question, of the six updated patrol zones, which one of them generally gets the most priority calls?
So two and three are going to be our higher call volume areas for priority calls for service. But the, the great thing about District Policing, one of the things that we did, so if you look at Area One or Zone One, we actually sucked in the police department because a lot of people show up to the PD to file a police report or to ask for a police officer to show up. And so the previous Area Two car would have to go to the station a lot. And we found that by sucking that into Zone One, we're able to eliminate that from two and three so they can handle those high crime or high priority areas. Yeah.
Thank you. Quick question, do you foresee, or do you have, I know at one point where I actually worked in the Broadmore Allen Mall was like a regional field office. Do you have other field offices like that or is, I know there's one potentially planned with some of the new construction down Road one hundred. Is there intent to have like satellite offices?
Right. So currently, right now, we have four. One is at Kurtzman Park. The second one is downtown across the street from Peanuts Park North. The other one is at Twenty-second Avenue, just north of Sylvester Street. And then the last one is in the old Station Eighty-three. We want to thank the fire department for moving out of that building so we could move into it. And so we are using that facility right now to cover that area.
Right on. Thank you.
Okay.
Seeing no more lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you for keeping us safe. With that, we will move on to item number eight, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to non-listed. So quickly on to nine, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A and ordinance, ordinance number four-seven-zero-nine Valley View Rezone, R-three with concomitant agreement. Two R-three and this is Action Z twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-five. It is a quasi-judicial, so I'm sure we're going to hear from, I apologize, Mr. Ferguson instead.
I'm Dan. Hi.
Dan, there we go. Thank you. Long night.
This is a quasi-judicial matter and that's to render a decision on the materials presented. The definition of quasi-judicial is it deals with the rights, duties and privileges relating to specific parties at a hearing proceeding or other contested proceedings. Appearance of fairness doctrine applies to such hearings and it involves three specific aspects, form, substance and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceedings which would affect the council member personally. Whether there has been any prejudgment of the issue prior to the hearing of fact and whether there has been any ex-party contact with any of the other, others, the staff prior to the hearing and any conflict with council members believe would prevent them from hearing the matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures or discourses, it would now be the time to make that known. And if there are members of the public that seek to have a council member disqualified from hearing the proceedings, that would also be a time for that to be raised.
Sounds good. Any council members need to recuse yourselves or make any statements? Seeing none, any members of the public, the same invitation, council member to recuse himself or disclose information. Seeing none, Dan.
You're able to proceed with the ordinance forty-seven zero-nine with a motion.
All right. So kicking it back to staff, I'm guessing Mr. Gonzalez. I see your light.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is a rezone request with the intention of removing the adopted, the existing adopted zone, which included a concomitant agreement. With all rezone petitions, there's a strict criteria that the application is required to meet. A public hearing was held with Pasco here and examiner, no, with a recommendation of approval for this rezone. No appeals of the recommendation were heard. On the next slide, this is the process for rezones. So public hearing with examiner, appeal period. And here we are this evening with potential action for council for a decision on the matter itself. On the next slide is a summary of the rezone request itself. A public hearing obviously was held in February. This is a parcel roughly just under five acres located on the west side of Road sixty-eight between Chapel Hill Boulevard and Argent Road, just south of the Interstate one eighty-two corridor. The existing land use for the comprehensive plan is medium density residential. The existing zone is R-three, medium density residential with a concomitant agreement. The proposed rezone is a R-three without the agreement. On the next slide, we wanted to provide council with a summary of what was included in that agreement when the zone was adopted back in twenty-fourteen. Some of the agreement language referred, reference limiting the construction to a specific type of housing typology. In this case, a townhome. There were limits placed on building height. There were limits on the architectural features and construction of materials of the buildings themselves. There were requirements for landscape buffers and trees and also requirements for shielding of night lighting to prevent spillage to adjacent properties. With staff review, the proposed rezone request, we also wanted to look into the language that existed in the existing concomitant agreement. And these are typically requirements that would be reviewed and evaluated at a project level. At a project level application and not necessarily related to the zone itself. So staff certainly supports the requested zone change. It received a recommendation of approval from the hearing examiner. No appeals on the approval were received by staff. We did do a brief query into seeing if we could match the home, the households that received notices on this zone versus those that received notices back in twenty-fourteen along with those homes that provided comments back in twenty-fourteen. And there was a significant overlap and match. However, we did not receive any comments opposing the zone change itself. So staff concurs with the hearing examiner's decision and for approval. And happy to answer any questions I can about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do I have, do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. Melony, can I get a motion, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number forty-seven oh-nine, amending the zoning classifications of certain real property located at the south side of Aintree Drive between Aintree Lane and Ladbrook Lane, Pasco Franklin County, Washington, from R-three, medium density residential with a concomitant agreement to R-three medium density residential and further authorized publication by summary only.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Can we get a voice vote or a roll call vote on this one? This is quasi.
Councilmember Harpster?
Yes.
Perales?
Yes.
Perales?
Yes.
Blaiso?
Yes.
Grimm?
Yes.
Melony?
Yes.
Serrano?
Yes.
Is he in, Ms.?
Excellent. Thank you. Item B, Resolution Number four-four-three-six, third amended and restated interlocal agreement for Benton County Emergency Services adding Franklin County. Looks like Chief Crowley.
Yes. Good, good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you for this opportunity. It is clear that I need to work on my entourage when presenting, but I'm going to, I'm going to do my best. So, thanks. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting on information on the third amended and restated interlocal agreement between Benton County Emergency Services and also seeking resolution approval. This is kind of a, an interesting situation right here. So we are looking at a very expedited process, which is typically not something we look for. We want to give more time in these, in these approval processes so people can make sure we have, have the right information given and opportunities to think about it. But on this particular case, as it's unique, because it's very time sensitive. What we're looking at and specifically time sensitive is grant money that we can take advantage of that expires at the end of the month. It also allows us to participate in a regional approach to cost sharing. It also allows us to take advantage of Motorola who is bidding this, this project and their costs do increase next month. So tonight, we'll be going over a little bit of the history and a couple of processes and then talk about where we go from here. So the history of Benton County Emergency Services, it was created in nineteen ninety-six. And then in two thousand eighteen, we had the second amended and reinstated interlocal agreement. Which with that, we started with the creation and that included Benton County and Franklin County and also the other cities as far as Richland, Kennewick, Pasco, West Richland, Prosser, Benton City and also the other fire protection districts and Benton PUD. Also with this was the creation of CCOM, which is our dispatch center. The current status that we have going on is the BCS Executive Board is the governing body for Benton County Emergency Services. It also provides the dispatching for public safety and emergency services located in both Benton and Franklin Counties. So that includes both fire and law enforcement. The existing ILA addresses maintenance and operational and existing capital assets. So it does cover who owns what. It also, it also show, the current ILA is broken out into two microwave systems. That's what we're really looking at right now. That's how we communicate through our VHF and eight-hundred megahertz radio systems. Right now, it's broken out into Benton County and Franklin County have their own. Where we're at right now and why this is such an urgent process is both of these systems are in dire need of replacement. They have been so for quite some time and we're at pretty much a, a point that it could be catastrophic if we didn't get something fixed immediately. So with a new language, what we're looking at is it would combine everything into five member agencies, each owning twenty percent. So this would be Benton and Franklin Counties, each as an agency, the city of Kennewick, Richland and Pasco. This also removes Benton PUD, which is at their request. Also addresses capital acquisition and ownership of the microwave system, again as a bi-county project. And this was actually unanimously, unanimously approved March sixth by the BCS Executive Board to move forward with this. So the benefits of the ILA. Again, this allows for a regional approach for funding for a bi-county microwave system. It's going to consolidate everyone's resources into one program instead of just having different counties competing for funding sources and allows us to work together. It also sets the framework for an eight-hundred megahertz platform for agencies in both Benton and Franklin Counties. Right now, law enforcement is using eight-hundred megahertz and fire is using VHF. VHF is a system that is becoming a little bit more antiquated for us. And this is the, if you ever heard that parts to the system are almost nonexistent. And so as we did a cost analysis and fire is looking at what the best route to go, we found that eight-hundred megahertz is the correct way to go. That's also going to allow us to more seamlessly work and communicate with law enforcement. And again, this also allows for collaboration for cost sharing. Again, something, all these different agencies are working towards the same goal. So we realize it's better if we do it together. So the, the financial impacts or the fiscal impacts. What we're looking at is, again, this establishes ownership for future capital acquisitions. So it allows every agency of those five members. So it allows every agency of, of those five member agencies to actually have, uh, equal ownership in what's purchased. Uh, it commits the city to a twenty percent cost share for the microwave radio system. And, um, the anticipated costs for the city of Pasco would be right around nine hundred thousand dollars plus tax. So how this is broken down is the first payment is expected to be at the end of March of, uh, this month. And, um, and what that cost will be is the, the tax portion. So the grant funding that we receive or, or have before we, we haven't used it yet, is two million dollars. And initial cost to start this project up is at two million dollars in product. And then, uh, the five agencies are responsible for the, the tax portion of that, which would be roughly about thirty-four thousand dollars per agency. Uh, the rest of the funds that are gonna be needed to, uh, make this project go is gonna be in the next two payments, and that's broken out into twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So again, the, the recommendation is, uh, that we have is that we do, um, approve authorization of the city manager to execute the third amended and reinstated interlocal agreement for Benton County Emergency Services. And that's what I have, do you have any questions?
Thank you, chief, I appreciate that, uh, council member Grim?
Um, thank you for the presentation, Chief Crowley. So let me ask, this is something I've heard just even being a community member, is this gonna solve our problems with SECOM?
With, with CCOM?
Yeah.
So it's definitely gonna be a step in the right direction.
Okay.
And so what we're looking at right now is, is basically allowing us to communicate, um, with each other and with, with dispatch. So when you say the, the problems, are you have any specific?
Just the, the infrastructure, the, the radios, the, yeah, exactly what you're saying.
So this step right here is specifically looking at the microwave system.
Okay.
Uh, we fully expect that, um, as this goes through, because the other cities and, um, the other counties are going to their, um, councils and commissioners, that this gets, uh, approved by all of them. And this will give us, again, a step in the right direction. We will see, we will still need to be looking at the eight hundred megahertz system, which will be another, um, process that we have to work through.
Okay, yeah, and those were a couple of my other questions, did the other member agencies take action? Are you happy with this?
I am, I support it. And as far as the other agencies, I believe their councils are Tuesday, and I'm not sure with, uh, the counties when they, when they go, but it's, it's sometime this week.
Okay, thank you, do we have any projections of just the, the complete fix, like you said, the eight hundred megahertz? Or what the, what the next step actually is then in the process?
So as far as, uh, going forward, if we get to go forward through this and we get approval for the microwave system, our next step is, um, the city of Richland has taken the lead and we're following and we're part of it is a joint, um, uh, going for an AFG, so a grant and getting eight hundred megahertz radios. So right now the first step is allowing us, if we get this grant, to get, um, every fir- uh, frontline apparatus with an eight hundred megahertz radio, and then moving forward from there. Uh, there's still a lot of funding, um, availability that we'll be looking for and finding through grants.
Okay, thank you, chief, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Ms. Blaiso.
This, I know there's another part to this, which you said only, I guess I've heard the big plan that was presented at the commissioner's meeting. Um, if this doesn't pass, or if one of the entities don't agree to this, what happens, what could be the end result of this?
So this is just me speaking, but, uh, if we don't show up or we don't pass this part, I, I can just assume that the other agencies wanna proceed with this, and then we might not be part of the cost sharing efforts. So it might be a financial impact to the other agencies, so that instead of five, there'll be four and dividing that cost amongst four.
From what I understand, this is an important part of emergency services throughout a very big scale.
Correct, it is, this is building the infrastructure, so the microwave system allows our, uh, radios to communicate. So it's the main infrastructure allowing the frequencies to exist. And so it's from, I think it's three hundred megahertz to, I, I think, two or three hundred gigahertz. So looking at that eight hundred megahertz will allow us to work, use the bandwidth. And so this is the, the main infrastructure to allow our radios to talk to each other. So yes, this is gonna be covering all of Franklin and Benton County, well, majority of Franklin County and Benton County.
Detrimental to safety.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Blaiso. Uh, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Melney, can we get a motion?
Yeah, thank you, mayor, I move to approve resolution number forty-four thirty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute a third amended and restated interlocal agreement for Benton County Emergency Services.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, item C, resolution number four four three seven, settlement agreement for Lewis Street LLC purchase, looks like Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening, mayor and members of council, uh, on May second, twenty twenty-two, city council executed a, uh, purchase and sale agreement with the proponents of Lewis Place LLC for a parcel located on Heritage Boulevard. Uh, for a selling price of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there were some discrepancies between the terms of the PSA that were adopted and the subsequent, subsequent deed conveying the property. Uh, and these discrepancies had led to different interpretations of the allowed uses of the property. Um, uh, we have worked with the, uh, Lewis Place LLC representative, staff, and, uh, council, uh, legal council on revising and coming up with a settlement agreement that both, uh, provides, uh, an opportunity for potential residential development, given, um, uh, that the, uh, development be subject to height restrictions and, uh, principal building, um, height restrictions as well. Um, the proposed resolution authorizes, uh, the city manager to execute, execute the mutual, mutual release and settlement agreement with Lewis Place LLC. Uh, staff and legal council, uh, recommend approval of the pros- proposed resolution, and, uh, myself and staff are happy to answer any questions, um, on this matter, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gon- Gonzalez, do we have any, uh, questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. Melney.
Thank you, mayor, I move to approve resolution number four four three seven, approving the mutual release and settlement agreement with Lewis Place LLC and further authorize the city manager to execute the participation form and allocation agreement.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, uh, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Moving on to number ten, unfinished business, uh, item A. This is another quasi judicial, so Dan, I remember the name this time, uh, will be hearing from you. Uh, ordinance number four six seven one Lewis Place LLC for Jefferson Landing Rezone, R one A to R four, and this is, uh, former item number, or item number Z twenty twenty-two zero one three.
And thank you, uh, this again is also a quasi judicial matter that requires council members to consider potential conflicts, uh, which could include demonstrated bias for or against the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceedings which could affect the council members personally. Whether there is any prejudgment in the issues prior to the hearing, and whether there's been any ex-party contact with any of the staff prior to this hearing or any other conflict which the council member believes would prevent them from hearing the matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has such feelings or disclosures, now would be the time to break, make that known. And if there's any members of the public that have concern about council members, it would also be appropriate for that to be brought to the forefront at this time to, as well.
Do, uh, Mr. Harpster, your dice, your win?
Yeah, I'll just made the declaration that I've known the applicant for a long time, uh, as a friend and acquaintance, but we have no business dealings together, and, uh, we've not discussed this property at all, so I'm confident I can make an unbiased decision.
Uh, anyone else from council? Seeing none, do we have anyone from the audience that, uh, wishes to, uh, either make a motion or statement regarding a particular council member? Uh, potential of conflict. Seeing none, uh, I guess we move forward with you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening again, mayor and members of council, again, the requirements for zoning petitions are on the screen, uh, related to the date of the affected zone, the change conditions, in fact, to justify the change of the zone itself along with alignment with adopted code, uh, policies, in particular the city's comprehensive plan. On the next slide is the, uh, review, uh, actually, we'll just go straight to the zone itself, that's okay. Um, uh, this initially was brought, uh, to city council in June of twenty twenty-three. However, the item was tabled at the request of legal council, uh, for it, uh, to receive some additional, uh, review. Um, uh, this was originally, uh, scheduled with a public hearing on August, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, with the Pasco hearing examiner consider the zone, uh, from the existing R one A, which is a low-density alternative residential district to R four high-density residential. Uh, following the public hearing, the examiner recommended approval of the applicant's request for the zone change. No appeals of the recommendation were, um, received. This is a, uh, a parcel located on Heritage Boulevard between Lewis Street and East Helena. It's roughly, uh, two point two five acres under the mixed residential commercial land use. The proposed zone complies with that land use, and, uh, an environmental determination was issued, um, uh, with no, uh, mitigations necessary, given that this is a non-project action. So, uh, what that staff concurs with the here and examiner recommendation and is happy to answer any questions from council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, do we have any questions or comments from council, Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm a little late to it, I actually had to Google, um, the LLC to see if I was familiar with it too, as I didn't realize it was somebody I knew but have not even discussed the project. And I guess that says something that I had to Google it just to even find out who it was. So anyways, I feel confident that I can be impartial at this point, thank you.
Well, thank you for your, your Googly, um, with that, uh, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, I'll ask us, members of the public, if anyone has any comments in regards to Mr. Grim's new disclosure. Seeing none, um, do we have any questions or comment from council, if not? Mr. Melney?
Thank you, mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number forty-six seventy-one, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located along Heritage Boulevard between East Lewis Street and East A Street, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from R dash one dash A to R four, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second. We've got a motion and a second, since this was quasi judicial, let's go ahead and do a roll call, Ms. Crystal.
Council member Peralas?
Yes.
Brajas?
Yes.
Blaiso?
Yes.
Grim?
Yes.
Harpster?
Yes.
Melney?
Yes.
Serrano?
Yes.
Is unanimous.
Thank you. With that, we can move on to item number eleven, uh, new business, I've been informed by staff, there is none. And, uh, item number twelve miscellaneous discussion, I've been informed by staff, there's none from their end. So, um, Mr. Peralas and Mr. Harpster, let's, uh, try to keep.
You got it, mayor, I'll be brief. Um, I don't know, many of you guys saw there was a recent court decision made on Friday. I, I don't wanna get into the sticky, um, partisan politics, but I just wanted to gauge support for a letter, um, that we can send to either to our lobbyists, um, I, I think this, when I, when I look at our state legislature representation we have locally, it's really about relationships, and I think we've developed really good relationships with our, um, current representatives. And I just didn't like the way, um, that really upended our, our, our st- state representative delegation. Um, primarily, uh, s- uh, past, the former Pasco City Council member Nikki Torres and current state senator, um, she said she got booted out of her district based on this, um, ruling, and I just didn't like the way they drew the districts. I mean, we're in, technically, some of us were a part of the cities in the fourteenth, and, you know, I, I just, it just looks all wonky. And so I just wanted to gauge, um, though this body's, uh, uh, maybe ability to send a letter to our lobbyists that they can give to the state legislature or the Washington State Redistrictment Commission, saying that, you know, we would like for them to reconvene and work this way out as opposed to allowing the courts dictate that, so, thank you.
I, I don't know if you're looking for a response immediately, or if you wanna circle, uh, circulate something through staff to come back to us.
Yeah, I, I can send an email and then we can maybe talk about it at another, at another, another meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's, time isn't of the essence at this point, where people are still trying to figure things out, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a significant loss, uh, Senator Torres has, you know, lobbied very well on our behalf. Not just as a former colleague, but, uh, I've met with her several times, as she's been up in Oli- Olympia, and she's done great work for our, uh, city. Mr. Harpster?
Thank you, mayor, uh, just mentioned that BF Cog is hosting a bike plan meeting tomorrow evening at Pasco Library on Hopkins at five PM. So, for any of the five residents here listening, um, I'll be there. Um, the focus is just improving bike safety, uh, throughout Tri-Cities, this is one of three that they're hosting. Um, there's certain parts of Richland along the river that have pedestrian dedicated paths and bike dedicated paths. And, um, that's helpful when I'm out cycling, I'm normally at twenty mile per hour speeds, not to brag. But, um, it's dangerous when toddlers see me and dart right in front of me and, um, not fun at all. So anyways, um, for anybody in the public that wishes to attend at five PM tomorrow at the, uh, Hopkins Library.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster, seeing no additional lights, we can move on to number thirteen, executive session, great news, none. That means we move on to item fourteen at nine forty-five PM, we are adjourned.